Good evening and welcome to the Tuesday, June 11th Regular School Board Business Meeting. Will you all join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's begin. Are there any adjustments to the agenda?
I do have some adjustments. I'd like to add an 8F, consideration to approve Marshall Weeks as business manager. Kind of in the end. And then I'd like to add Wendy Derselwix's name to the co-curricular list to approve tonight, and she is the district webmaster. And the girls' basketball team, many of them are playing lacrosse tonight, so they'll be here sometime, but when they finish their game. So when they come in, hopefully we can recognize them then.
Hopefully with good news.
Hopefully with good news.
So would Wendy's name go under extracurricular stipends?
Yes, right above the, it could go right above the kindergarten team leader on that list. That's it.
Okay. Next, may I have a motion for approval of board minutes? I move we approve the board minutes as listed in our agenda for Tuesday, June 11th. A second. Maybe we should clarify which minutes we're approving. It's for Tuesday, May 14th. Thank you. It's usually listed, but... A second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Okay. See, comments from student representatives, they're not here, so we will move on to comments from the public on agenda items. We, I know that we don't have this on the agenda, I don't believe, but Anne Carney is here to make some...
That would be very helpful. Thank you for welcoming me tonight. I'm Anne Carney, and I'm Cape Elizabeth State Representative to the Legislature. Senator Rebecca Millet was also a cosponsor of these motions, but we asked the Legislature to acknowledge athletic performances for the winter sports season for some very special accomplishments by Cape students, and so I brought them with me today, and I'll deliver them to you, but I'd just like to acknowledge Lisa Godro for winning the individual Class B cross-country state championship, that was the fall, Darcy Cochran for winning the Class B championship in the 55-meter hurdles, the Cape High School Boys Basketball Team for winning the Class B South Championship, Cape Elizabeth High School Girls Swim Team for winning the Class B championship, and to Olivia Ty for her state record in the 200 freestyle. And then for the Cape Elizabeth High School Boys Ski Team, Class B Alpine Championship for the second year in a row. And then these are certificates, that if you could deliver them, should I give them to Mr. Shedd perhaps?
If he doesn't mind, yeah.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Carney, for being here.
Hi. So my name is Ayla Mansman. This is not on the agenda, but we have, we have something that we'd like to bring to all of your attention. Is that, is now the time to do that?
Probably not when things are not on the agenda.
Are the Anderson-Ashton's comments still?
We're under, yes, citizen comments, yeah, for items on the agenda.
Oh, for items on the agenda.
There's no section on the agenda of the items for the public comments on the agenda. It's not more on the agenda.
No.
So we didn't really know?
You have to make a request. Normally we would, if it's not on the agenda, you would make a special request in advance, but given it's the last meeting of the, of the school year going ahead.
Perfect. Thank you so much. So we are current and recently graduated students from Cape Elizabeth High School. We're here tonight to bring up an issue of sexual assault in our school district. There's currently no policy specifically outlining student expectations, guidelines for how to report, consequences for perpetrators and repeat perpetrators, and what student rights are regarding these issues in the, in the student handbook. We are also aware that there is an investigation happening into our school's response to multiple reports in the district, both middle and high, both middle and high school. We are here tonight to ask that the school board work with us over the summer to develop a comprehensive policy that will protect our students. We also want the administration of the high school to be held accountable for proper staff training around Title IX, mandated reporting, and support for students who disclose. We are here respectfully and out of dire concern for our peers, who have, who have personally seen traumatized, who have personally been traumatized by the current state of our school's response. And we want to work towards solution and early prevention education that will inhibit any more trauma. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Lily Frame. I live at 4 Dermot Drive. The story I'm about to tell is not my own, but a survivor's who was unable to be here tonight. She wants you to hear her story. While I cannot speak to her experience, I can speak to my own in my four years at CEHS, so I'd be happy to answer any questions. Here is her story. Let me be clear, I do not blame anyone in this town for what one individual chose to do to me. The perpetrator of my assault acted on his own. What I expected from the Cape Elizabeth School District was an effort to protect a student like me in the aftermath of a serious and inexcusable act of violence by another student. Instead, I was left unbelieved, unprotected, and unsafe because of the actions and choices of mandatory reporters and school administrators at Cape Elizabeth High School. I did not mention my assault to anyone in Cape Elizabeth until the June after my junior year. The circumstances leading to this disclosure are an example of the dangerous behaviors exhibited by Cape Elizabeth High School administrators. The boy who had assaulted me made threats against me, which were specific in nature. They involved gun violence and a desire to come into the school to commit those acts. Despite the fact that my name was the one mentioned as the first person who would be shot, no one working for the Cape Elizabeth School District ever informed me that I was potentially in danger. I was never contacted, though other students who had allegedly heard the threat were brought in for questioning. When one of these students told me about what was going on, my parents demanded I be given the opportunity to speak with the head of the school's internal investigation into the incident. I knew I needed to disclose my assault in order to stress that this was a student with violent tendencies. I told him that this student had been violent with me in the past and had proceeded to harass me after our relationship had ended. He dismissed this statement entirely, replying with a dismissive wave of his hand that he doesn't know anything about what happened between the perpetrator and myself. I pressed further, but it became clear that my concerns were of no importance. I was told that I had nothing to worry about. Because these threats were only brought to light after the school had ended for the summer, there was no punishment at the time for the individual who made the threats. It's important that I note, I also made me aware of both the assault and the threats. She too told me those two things had nothing to do with each other. In the February of my senior year, an entire calendar year, and two months after the initial assault, it was brought to light that the threats had not stopped last June. I learned only from other students that the perpetrator of my assault had been suspended a single day for continuing threats of gun violence. Again, Cape Elizabeth High School administrators failed to inform me that the same individual who had assaulted, harassed, and threatened me before was making even more serious threats. Now, the perpetrator was given a day-long suspension. To convey the seriousness of these threats, Cape Elizabeth Police decided to take all guns from the residents of the perpetrator in February after the second round of threats came to light. At my graduation, the boy sat directly in front of me. At project graduation, he crowded me with his friends, and I spent the night trembling. Throughout my senior year of high school, I was told by many students that this boy was a troubled young man who was by no means dangerous. I was told that I ought to seek therapy to help with my trauma, a trauma which they pretended did not exist. My assaultor counseling to help him through his difficult time. These administrators even suggested I sit down with my perpetrator face-to-face, that I might hear his side of the story. I refuse to allow any other student in Cape Elizabeth schools to become the villain in the narrative that administrators force upon them, for fear that the pristine idea of our school system may be shattered. This story will be rewritten, and this time will be narrated by individuals who are willing to stand up for what is right. I also have copies of her testimony if you'd like to see them. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Christine Andricus, and I'm a junior. I reported my assault twice, and this was back almost a year ago. This was in October 2018. And nothing was left beyond that room. Nothing was reported, even though under Title IX mandated reporting. I'm currently in an investigation with the school right now. But, so my concern is about staff not knowing too much about mandated reporting, and how big of an issue that is. And my parents were very concerned when they were not informed about what happened. I was also brushed off by one of the sophomores of the school. I was told not to put my mental energy into my assault. I was told he may have thought it was a romantic way to wake me up, this happened while I was asleep, the assault. And when I tried to bring to light what had happened to me and tried to explain, I kept getting brushed off, and the topics kept getting changed. So I just wanted to inform you guys and just say that I think there needs to be more done about mandated reporting in the school, and how important it is. Thanks.
Thank you. Well, thank you, all three of you, for coming tonight. Did not know this was coming, just to be clear, and we will look to gather with you in the future, near future. Thank you very much. Okay, so we're going to move on now to presentations. The girls' basketball team, I think we're going to wait until after lacrosse game. And then next, I think Jeff, we're going to present the Presidential Scholar Award nomination.
I'm not actually presenting the Presidential Scholar Award. I think that's, gets presented when Rohan goes to a trip in Washington DC, which is coming up later this month, I think. Okay. So this is Rohan Friedman, and his twin sister Zara, and mom Sabrina. So they are here. So the Presidential Scholar Award, there are 3.5 million high school seniors in America, and there are Presidential Scholars 161. I couldn't find my calculator today, so I didn't do that as a percentage, but it's a really, 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 really tiny percentage of sort of the strongest, best students in America. So Rohan has been selected as one of two Presidential Scholars for me. He'll have an opportunity to go to Washington DC, hear some fascinating speakers, meet some fascinating people. So Rohan is, I've seen his resume. It's really incredibly long, because he's done so much. He's, he is active in World Affairs Council. He's a member of the Boys Swimming Team, one of the strongest members of the Boys Swimming Team, has been swimming for years. He's very active in our World Affairs Council and in Model United Nations events. He has received, if I'm correct about this, 11 Scholastic Writing Awards over the course of his high school career. In 2015, his dad has a very long commute, like multiple hours of commute, and watching his dad, sort of, Rohan grew up with that, Rohan is a bit of a tinkerer, so he went down and created a pillow, which I think is called the Sleep Counter Pillow? Was that?
Yeah, like a sheep counter.
Oh, sheep counter, sheep counter pillow, and which won the 2015 3M Young Scholars Merit Award, which is again is an Nishi White competition. I'm not sure if Rohan charged his dad for that, or his marketing at all, but it sounds like there will at least be some possibilities. In 2017, Rohan went to the World Food Prize Conference in Iowa, where he learned from practicing scientists and folks in agriculture about global hunger, which got him fascinated to explore the following summer. He applied for an internship in Beijing, China, so he worked for eight weeks in a laboratory, working in rice fields, and doing a lot of genetics-related research to try to identify strands of rice that could survive a variety of climates, I believe. So Rohan was a featured TEDx speaker, sort of talking about his passion for addressing issues of food insecurity around the world. So we wanted to bring Rohan to the school board to acknowledge he is one of America's outstanding students, and he's right here in Cape Elizabeth. So I don't know if, should I bring, bring him? So Rohan, come on up.
It's pretty unbelievable. I wasn't really expecting. It's like a kind of a long process to apply, and lots of steps, and I didn't even think I'd make it past like the first step. So I was pretty much in shock, and still pretty unbelievable just thinking about it. But I'd just like to thank like all my teachers throughout the years for everything. So yeah, thank you so much.
So thank you, Jeff, and I believe that you are on the slate for some of the next steps of the recognition of retirees.
So Jason is going to talk about Lisa.
So we'll start with Lisa Durman's retirement, and Jason.
Good evening. Thank you for coming, Lisa, tonight, too. Lisa does not like attention drawn to her, so I'm gonna kind of take it easy. So thank you for letting me speak tonight about Lisa Durman. These, at this time of year, when some of our folks are retiring, although I'm many years away from that, I'm very just passionate and excited for these teachers. I see how hard that they work, and Lisa is certainly no exception in the energy that she has brought to Pon Cove and the students, right up until the last few days of school, is just amazing. So I just have a few words to say. So Lisa's journey at Pon Cove began long before she became a teacher. She actually started as a parent volunteer in 1995, and that was when her oldest daughter was enrolled in kindergarten at Pon Cove. During that time, she was active in the PCPA, and, and she initiated the Teacher Mini Grant that, and I believe it's the same structure that teachers enjoy today, right? So that was her, and a lot of teachers are grateful. I wonder how many people know that at Pon Cove, that you did that, Lisa. After that, she began substituting at Pon Cove, and began to realize that she had a passion for working with children and teaching. And she, her previous career, she was a freelance writer and editor, so she had kind of a flexible schedule, which allowed her to sub. And then she decided to go back to school, and enrolled in the ETEP program, and received her teaching certification, and then came back to teach at Pon Cove. So it's quite a story, a whole, a whole journey of being a parent, and a substitute, and a teacher in this one school. And she began teaching in 2005, and has been teaching there with us for 14 years. Just a couple of quick things during the time, at Pon Cove, she proved to be a very talented, an individual of many talents. So she always keeps a guitar in her classroom, and plays guitar, and sings with her students every day. And I've had the, the privilege of being in there a few times, and it's, the kids just love it. It makes such a difference in the classroom, the climate, and the community. It's, it's amazing to see. Lisa also has wrote and directed several musical versions of Dr. Seuss books, and last year I was lucky enough to be in one of her plays. It's, it's just amazing. She writes these plays. This one was Charlotte's Web, which went along with our visiting author last year. And the staff gather and practice their lines, and then perform for the students on stage. Just a huge impact to the school. And so you're welcome to come back and do another play with us if you want to. So I just can't say enough. And so Lisa, you will be very greatly missed, and you know that, by the staff and the students and the parents at Pon Cove, but we're also just very happy for you. So congratulations.
Lisa, on behalf of the school board and the school district, we have...
So Tom Lazard could not be, I don't think he's here. He could not be here tonight, but I, the superintendent suggested I, it would still be acceptable to say a few words about Tom. So Tom has, is leaving Cape Elizabeth High School after 17 years as our instrumental music teacher, our jazz program teacher. And he is an outstanding human being and an outstanding teacher who's affected a lot of students' lives. I was saddened, happy for him, but saddened when he came to tell me that he was going to be leaving. Tom started off as a journalist, not as a music educator, and worked in journalism after getting a first bachelor's degree in journalism, explored that career for several years, and then decided he wanted to go back to school to pursue the possibility of teaching music. So he, he told me a story that I, some of which I didn't know recently, and he had to work really, 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 really hard in order to be at the level of some of the students in the program that he was in. And anybody who knows Tom knows that hard work is, is something that he does each and every day. So he, he emerged at the top of his program by the end of his program, and then he started a long career as a music educator in Massachusetts, in Florida, in Bitterford, Maine, and then here in Cape Elizabeth, Maine, where he has finished his career. He is recognized by his colleagues around the state, and is well-known in New England as one of the, one of the best music teachers in New England, really. He was the recipient this year of a national award called the John Laporta Jazz Educator of the Year, which is a huge honor for him, and a wonderful way for him to sort of cap his career. He is leaving a little earlier than he expected. He has an incredible relationship with his mom, and, and he wants to be able to travel with her, which has been a lifelong dream for both of them. He will also remain very active in music educating, conducting various drum and bugle corps over various summers. He is always experimenting through the end of his career, always learning about new things, always excited to read about how the brain works, and how you touch kids, and always experimenting with innovative ways to, to work, all centered ultimately, though, on how do I help kids become better young people, better people. Music was really the way he, he worked with kids, but he would have been a great teacher no matter what he taught. He was really totally concerned about the whole child, and Cape Elizabeth schools will be, will miss him greatly. It is one of the measures, though, of how well-regarded Tom is leaving the music program, that we had some wonderful, wonderful, wonderful candidates, and that's because people regard this program as one of the best in a very large area. So we're very fortunate and wish Tom the absolute best, because he's had a marvelous career. So now I'm going to talk about Dick Mullin next. I don't remember how many years Dick has been at Cape Elizabeth. I know it's 40-plus.
Forty-three.
Forty-three, forty-three years at Cape Elizabeth. I believe he retires as the longest-tenured teacher in the state of Maine, K through 12, which he's had an amazing career as an English teacher, a theater teacher, a coach of speech teams in a number of different sort of phases, and also with sort of mock trial inserted in there as well. He has won, he's, he, the emails that I've gotten from students over the years in terms of the impact that he has had on kids' lives is really quite incredible. A few weeks ago, a longtime resident of the school, Judy Dooley showed up out of the blue. I hadn't had, had a conversation with her for 15 years or something, and she started to talk and reminisce about Dick's influence on her students, her kids, and she was, she was, she was clearly highly affected by the result that, the effect, the positive effect that Dick has had on her own children. He's a guy who makes a difference. He's a guy who makes waves sometimes, and, but I would say, looking back on all the years that I've been working with Dick, the thing that, to me, is really incredibly noteworthy, and not true at many high schools, is how he managed to bring in students from all across the social strata of the school. From the students who were the theater, theater jocks would be my expression. I know that's not an expression, but you know what I mean by that. The kids who grew up to do theater, the kids who studied at their passion has been it from the time that they were in elementary school. But he would bring in students who were not bad at all. He would invite them in and recognize talents and bring things out of them that they didn't recognize that they had in themselves, including many, many students who were not super-active in a lot of things in school. So they found a passion through the theater program that Dick ran. So I will say it is the case that every extracurricular activity he's been involved in, to my knowledge, he has won state championships in. Speech team, he has won many, many, many state championships in. Mock trial, he won a state championship while he was in the mock trial program. To me, the thing that was most impressive, though, aside from championships, is again how he grew the programs that he was a part of, and brought in lots of wide variety of students from all across the spectrum of, of Cape Elizabeth's achievement spectrum, demographic spectrum, whatever it was. Other speech team coaches were awed when they saw the Cape Elizabeth kids rolling out of the buses, showing up for speech programs, just in terms of sheer numbers. Many, many wonderful theater productions over the years. Some of my personal favorites, and I'm not a theater critic, but some of my personal favorites, The Dishwasher, La Miserable, a musical, Almost Maine, which I thought was an incredibly touching piece. And his most, one of his, I think it was his most recent musical, Little Mermaid, right? And I could go back and back and back, because there's been many... And I could go back and back and back because there's been many productions that he's done, but extraordinary career, and that is Dick Mullin. So, thank you so much for what you've had. Thank you.
Thank you, on behalf of the school board and the whole of Cape Elizabeth, thank you so much.
Thank you. So, next to Dick is Mark Van Darbas, who's finishing off a 20-year career at Cape Elizabeth High School. You started the year before I did, I think. So, 20 years at Cape Elizabeth High School, teaching Spanish. Mark is another one who's had a fascinating career before going into education. He is, I'm not sure if you're actively an ordained pastor, don't know how that keeps up or whatever, but Mark, Mark is a pastor. He has been involved in that aspect of life. He has been involved as an educator, and he is involved as a world traveler. And really, I think the gift that Mark brings every day to his kids in classes is bringing the world to Cape Elizabeth, to his classroom. He has grew up for a significant amount of time in the Philippines, which I think probably has something to do with his mastery of Spanish. He has lived in Scandinavia, visited Scandinavia, visited places in Europe, and I think, not sure about this because I should have meant to talk to you earlier today, but I think, I think, I know that there are other continents as well that he has visited and brought in to his classrooms, aspects of all of those things. He is, for a guy who's been teaching for a long, 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 long time, he is also one of Cape Elizabeth's technology pioneers. Whenever I go into any of our world language classrooms, there is always a portion of the class where the kids are talking in groups and listening in groups and that sort of thing. And very frequently, they are recording, they practice after a period of time, and then they record their conversations. That is, that is the influence of Mark Van Darbas in sort of experimenting with new apps that he's learned about and things like that, and then introducing them to his colleagues and introducing them to classes. So, one of the things that is true in world language classes is it's not sit and listen, it is, students are very actively involved, and technology is one of those aspects that Mark has brought. I will say that one of the things that Mark also brings is every time I have a conversation with him, he knows his kids, not just how they do academically in Spanish, but he knows his kids, he oftentimes knows the families of the kids, he oftentimes knows their parents and their aunts and their uncles and their grandparents, because he just loves to talk to people, including loves to talk to kids. So, it is all about the whole child, getting to know the whole child, valuing and respecting the whole child. And those teachers are incredibly valuable, invaluable and hard to lose. Mark is, Mark and I may be having some coffee down in the Lower Mills area a little bit in, it's south of Boston, because my in-laws live just in Dorchester, just next to, near Milton, where Mark is moving to take care of his in-laws. So, I'm hoping that we get together and have a cup of coffee because he's a wonderful guy to have a conversation with. So, thank you, Mark, for all the years of service at Cape Elizabeth High School.
Thank you, Mr. Van Darbas, on behalf of the school board and the whole of Cape Elizabeth.
So, sitting on Mark's left is Mark Soule. And Mort, how long have you, how long have you been teaching, Mort?
Total? Fifty.
Fifty years?
Yes.
So, the, so, so...
I'm getting ready for my next fifty years.
So, I actually don't know. I mean, there's a lot of years in that, those, that three sub right there, there's a lot of years of experience. And if Dick has, is the most senior teacher in the state of Maine, and I believe he is, Mort is probably right up there. And maybe number two, or maybe I'm wrong, and maybe there's, I'm starting a competition between them now to see who's really been the longest serving. But Mort has been with us for 17 years, and he is the original Latin teacher in Cape Elizabeth. And the thing that is fascinating about Mort is he, he brings an incredible passion about his subject to every single day, every single class. He loves bringing in history. It's not just about learning Latin, it's about learning about the history and learning about the cultural context and learning about all those things. It's learning about a lot of stories that Mark, Mort brings to every single class, about the Red Sox, about Bowden, about who knows, all sorts of things. And the fascinating thing to me, and I think one of the most commendable things, is there's been a real shift over the 17 years that Mort has been at CEHS in the, that's sort of the demographic and achievement level of the students that he served. When Latin was first introduced, it seemed to attract students who wanted to take Latin as a second language and who are among Cape Elizabeth's highest achievers and just had a natural gift for it. And that has changed, so Mort is now serving a much more diverse clientele and doing it equally well. The quality of the program that Mort delivers is evidenced by how well his kids do in the national Latin exam every single year. And I will say that Mort is, anybody who knows him knows that he is one of the great characters in the high school. He gets to school about 6:30 in the morning. He beats me every day, and he's out there, he picks up the newspapers every day, and then he starts curling the picnic tables as, as part of his exercise regimen. He, he is a complete and utter character. He has so many sayings, I'm not even gonna begin to try to share with you all the sayings that Mort has, but his students know them. He is, he is sitting next to Mr. Van Darbas, who is one of the most technologically adept teachers in the high school. And Mort is, and I say this with great affection and respect, one of the major mudites of the school. And Mort certainly understands that historical reference. It is always a pleasure to get a handwritten note from Mort Soule that always ends "ex anime"? Is that what it is, Mort?
"Exanamo" is a friendly parting. It means "from the soul," so it's a, it's a pun in itself. "Exanamo" means "from the soul."
So, I always wondered, I was sort of scared to ask him what it meant, but I was assuming it was a nice, it was a nice thing, but it could have been, it could have been something else entirely, but that's not part of Mort's character. If you haven't ever seen Mort's Casey at the Bat, it is an unbelievable performance that he puts on for the kids every single year. And we will certainly miss Casey at the Bat. He did bring it, was actually able several years ago to bring it to Fenway Park and perform it in Fenway Park for the assembled thousands and thousands during a Red Sox game. So, the other thing that Mort does every single, every single Friday, the kids are guaranteed to have a test. Every single Friday, they have a test. I think that's been true for 17 of the 17 years that he's been at Cape Elizabeth High School. Keeps the kids on his toes, they're always well-prepared, they do well. So, we will absolutely miss Mort as a treasured icon, a character, and a completely dedicated teacher at the high school. So, thank you for all your years of service as well, Mort.
Thank you, Mr. Soule, on behalf of the school board and the whole of Cape Elizabeth. So, before we take a brief break to celebrate the retirees, since we have a full house of basketball players here who are waiting patiently, we thought we would do that before the break and then we can all celebrate together. Is Chris here, Castro?
It seems like it was a while ago now that some of them are dressed in lacrosse gear, and I'm happy to report they won, so they're happy. But the sportsmanship was a great honor for them. We had a great year, but at the end of the day, even though the record doesn't always reflect how good maybe, it certainly doesn't reflect how good they are as people and how hard they work and how much they dedicate themselves. So, to win the sportsmanship award and to hear other coaches tell me game after game how they admire how hard the girls play, how they play it the right way, and how they support one another, really means a lot. And the kids don't usually hear that. I hear it, and I try to let them know, but I think validation came through being voted by the other teams in the league as sportsmanship recipients. So, they play the game the right way, they win with humility, they lose with grace, and they treat each other like family. They're a great group of girls.
So, we were so excited and so proud to hear about this award, and in, I think our minds, nothing matters more than this sort of award, and we just, we're sorry it's a bit late in recognizing you, but we're doing it tonight before you guys are gone, gone. Congratulations on lacrosse you played. So, we have certificates, if anybody's not here, maybe you can just take it for them if you'd mind. Lily Frame. The school board will sit. Sorry, you have to do this. Emily Supple. Emily Goulding. Jessica Robichaud. Katie Manning. Allison Ingles. Congratulations. Thank you, Chris. And then Jeff Mitchell. Oh, and then Andy York. Thank you so much, and congratulations. Feel free to stay for the retirement celebration. We'll take a 15-minute break. Thank you. I'm glad we can make this work. Thank you. This is Ann. Oh, oh, sorry. Do you mind if we take your picture? It's over. Oh. Yeah. Thank you. Thank you. Feel free to stay for the retirement celebration. We'll take a 15-minute break. Thank you. I'm glad we can make this work. Thank you. This is Ann. Oh, oh, sorry. Do you mind if we take your picture? It's over. Oh. Yeah. Thank you. Thank you. Feel free to stay for the retirement celebration. We'll take a 15-minute break. Thank you. I'm glad we can make this work. Thank you. This is Ann. Oh, oh, sorry. Do you mind if we take your picture? It's over. Oh. Yeah. Thank you. Thank you Chris. And then Jeff Mitchell. Oh, and then Andy York. Thank you. Thank you so much, and congratulations. Feel free to stay for the retirement celebration. We'll take a 15-minute break. Thank you. I'm glad we can make this work. Thank you. This is Ann. Oh, oh, sorry. Do you mind if we take your picture? It's over. Oh. Yeah. Thank you. Thank you. Feel free to stay for the retirement celebration. We'll take a 15-minute break. Thank you. I'm glad we can make this work. Thank you. This is Ann. Oh, oh, sorry. Do you mind if we take your picture? It's over. Oh. Yeah. Thank you. Thank you Chris. And then Jeff Mitchell. Oh, and then Andy York. Thank you. Thank you so much, and congratulations. Feel free to stay for the retirement celebration. We'll take a 15-minute break. Thank you. I'm glad we can make this work. Thank you. This is Ann. Oh, oh, sorry. Do you mind if we take your picture? It's over. Oh. Yeah. Thank you. Thank you. Feel free to stay for the retirement celebration. We'll take a 15-minute break. Thank you. I'm glad we can make this work. Thank you. This is Ann. Oh, oh, sorry. Do you mind if we take your picture? It's over. Oh. Yeah. Thank you. Thank you Chris. And then Jeff Mitchell. Oh, and then Andy York. Thank you. Thank you so much, and congratulations. Feel free to stay for the retirement celebration. We'll take a 15-minute break. Thank you. I'm glad we can make this work. Thank you. This is Ann. Oh, oh, sorry. Do you mind if we take your picture? It's over. Oh. Yeah. Thank you. Thank you. Feel free to stay for the retirement celebration. We'll take a 15-minute break. Thank you. I'm glad we can make this work. Thank you. This is Ann. Oh, oh, sorry. Do you mind if we take your picture? It's over. Oh. Yeah. Thank you. Thank you. Feel free to stay for the retirement celebration. We'll take a 15-minute break. Thank you. I'm glad we can make this work. Thank you. This is Ann. Oh, oh, sorry. Do you mind if we take your picture? It's over. Oh. Yeah. Thank you. Thank you. Feel free to stay for the retirement celebration. We'll take a 15-minute break. Thank you. I'm glad we can make this work. Thank you. This is Ann. Oh, oh, sorry. Do you mind if we take your picture? It's over. Oh. Yeah. Thank you. Thank you. Feel free to stay for the retirement celebration. We'll take a 15-minute break. Thank you. I'm glad we can make this work. Thank you. This is Ann. Oh, oh, sorry. Do you mind if we take your picture? It's over. Oh. Yeah. Thank you. Thank you. Feel free to stay for the retirement celebration. We'll take a 15-minute break. Thank you. I'm glad we can make this work. Thank you. This is Ann. Oh, oh, sorry. Do you mind if we take your picture? It's over. Oh. Yeah. Thank you. Thank you. Feel free to stay for the retirement celebration. We'll take a 15-minute break. Thank you. I'm glad we can make this work. Thank you. This is Ann. Oh, oh, sorry. Do you mind if we take your picture? It's over. Oh. Yeah. Thank you. Thank you. Feel free to stay for the retirement celebration. We'll take a 15-minute break. Thank you. I'm glad we can make this work. Thank you. This is Ann. Oh, oh, sorry. Do you mind if we take your picture? It's over. Oh. Yeah. Thank you. Thank you. Feel free to stay for the retirement celebration. We'll take a 15-minute break. Thank you. I'm glad we can make this work. Thank you. This is Ann. Oh, oh, sorry. Do you mind if we take your picture? It's over. Oh. Yeah. Thank you. Thank you. Feel free to stay for the retirement celebration. We'll take a 15-minute break. Thank you. I'm glad we can make this work. Thank you. This is Ann. Oh, oh, sorry. Do you mind if we take your picture? It's over. Oh. Yeah. Thank you. Thank you. Feel free to stay for the retirement celebration. We'll take a 15-minute break. Thank you. I'm glad we can make this work. Thank you. This is Ann. Oh, oh, sorry. Do you mind if we take your picture? It's over. Oh. Yeah. Thank you. Thank you. Feel free to stay for the retirement celebration. We'll take a 15-minute break. Thank you. I'm glad we can make this work. Thank you. This is Ann. Oh, oh, sorry. Do you mind if we take your picture? It's over. Oh. Yeah. Thank you. Thank you. Feel free to stay for the retirement celebration. We'll take a 15-minute break. Thank you. I'm glad we can make this work. Thank you. This is Ann. Oh, oh, sorry. Do you mind if we take your picture? It's over. Oh. Yeah. Thank you. Thank you. Feel free to stay for the retirement celebration. We'll take a 15-minute break. Thank you. I'm glad we can make this work. Thank you. This is Ann. Oh, oh, sorry. Do you mind if we take your picture? It's over. Oh. Yeah. Thank you. Thank you. Feel free to stay for the retirement celebration. We'll take a 15-minute break. Thank you. I'm glad we can make this work. Thank you. This is Ann. Oh, oh, sorry. Do you mind if we take your picture? It's over. Oh. Yeah. Thank you. Thank you. Feel free to stay for the retirement celebration. We'll take a 15-minute break. Thank you. I'm glad we can make this work. Thank you. This is Ann. Oh, oh, sorry. Do you mind if we take your picture? It's over. Oh. Yeah. Thank you. Thank you. Feel free to stay for the retirement celebration. We'll take a 15-minute break. Thank you. I'm glad we can make this work. Thank you. This is Ann. Oh, oh, sorry. Do you mind if we take your picture? It's over. Oh. Yeah. Thank you. Thank you. Feel free to stay for the retirement celebration. We'll take a 15-minute break. Thank you. I'm glad we can make this work. Thank you. This is Ann. Oh, oh, sorry. Do you mind if we take your picture? It's over. Oh. Yeah. Thank you. Thank you. Feel free to stay for the retirement celebration. We'll take a 15-minute break. Thank you. I'm glad we can make this work. Thank you. This is Ann. Oh, oh, sorry. Do you mind if we take your picture? It's over. Oh. Yeah. Thank you. Thank you. Feel free to stay for the retirement celebration. We'll take a 15-minute break. Thank you. I'm glad we can make this work. Thank you. This is Ann. Oh, oh, sorry. Do you mind if we take your picture? It's over. Oh. Yeah. Thank you. Thank you. Feel free to stay for the retirement celebration. We'll take a 15-minute break. Thank you. I'm glad we can make this work. Thank you. This is Ann. Oh, oh, sorry. Do you mind if we take your picture? It's over. Oh. Yeah. Thank you. Thank you. Feel free to stay for the retirement celebration. We'll take a 15-minute break. Thank you. I'm glad we can make this work. Thank you. This is Ann. Oh, oh, sorry. Do you mind if we take your picture? It's over. Oh. Yeah. Thank you. Thank you. Feel free to stay for the retirement celebration. We'll take a 15-minute break. Thank you. I'm glad we can make this work. Thank you. This is Ann. Oh, oh, sorry. Do you mind if we take your picture? It's over. Oh. Yeah. Thank you. Thank you. Feel free to stay for the retirement celebration. We'll take a 15-minute break. Thank you. I'm glad we can make this work. Thank you. This is Ann. Oh, oh, sorry. Do you mind if we take your picture? It's over. Oh. Yeah. Thank you. Thank you. Feel free to stay for the retirement celebration. We'll take a 15-minute break. Thank you. I'm glad we can make this work. Thank you. This is Ann. Oh, oh, sorry. Do you mind if we take your picture? It's over. Oh. Yeah. Thank you. Thank you. Feel free to stay for the retirement celebration. We'll take a 15-minute break. Thank you. I'm glad we can make this work. Thank you. This is Ann. Oh, oh, sorry. Do you mind if we take your picture? It's over. Oh. Yeah. Thank you. Thank you. Feel free to stay for the retirement celebration. We'll take a 15-minute break. Thank you. I'm glad we can make this work. Thank you. This is Ann. Oh, oh, sorry. Do you mind if we take your picture? It's over. Oh. Yeah. Thank you. Thank you. Feel free to stay for the retirement celebration. We'll take a 15-minute break. Thank you. I'm glad we can make this work. Thank you. This is Ann. Oh, oh, sorry. Do you mind if we take your picture? It's over. Oh. Yeah. Thank you. Thank you. Feel free to stay for the retirement celebration. We'll take a 15-minute break. Thank you. I'm glad we can make this work. Thank you. This is Ann. Oh, oh, sorry. Do you mind if we take your picture? It's over. Oh. Yeah. Thank you. Thank you. Feel free to stay for the retirement celebration. We'll take a 15-minute break. Thank you. I'm glad we can make this work. Thank you. This is Ann. Oh, oh, sorry. Do you mind if we take your picture? It's over. Oh. Yeah. Thank you. Thank you. Feel free to stay for the retirement celebration. We'll take a 15-minute break. Thank you. I'm glad we can make this work. Thank you. This is Ann. Oh, oh, sorry. Do you mind if we take your picture? It's over. Oh. Yeah. Thank you. Thank you. Feel free to stay for the retirement celebration. We'll take a 15-minute break. Thank you. I'm glad we can make this work. Thank you. This is Ann. Oh, oh, sorry. Do you mind if we take your picture? It's over. Oh. Yeah. Thank you. Thank you. Feel free to stay for the retirement celebration. We'll take a 15-minute break. Thank you. I'm glad we can make this work. Thank you. This is Ann. Oh, oh, sorry. Do you mind if we take your picture? It's over. Oh. Yeah. Thank you. Thank you. Feel free to stay for the retirement celebration. We'll take a 15-minute break. Thank you. I'm glad we can make this work. Thank you. This is Ann. Oh, oh, sorry. Do you mind if we take your picture? It's over. Oh. Yeah. Thank you. Thank you. Feel free to stay for the retirement celebration. We'll take a 15-minute break. Thank you. I'm glad we can make this work. Thank you. This is Ann. Oh, oh, sorry. Do you mind if we take your picture? It's over. Oh. Yeah. Thank you. Thank you. Feel free to stay for the retirement celebration. We'll take a 15-minute break. Thank you. I'm glad we can make this work. Thank you. This is Ann. Oh, oh, sorry. Do you mind if we take your picture? It's over. Oh. Yeah. Thank you. Thank you. Feel free to stay for the retirement celebration. We'll take a 15-minute break. Thank you. I'm glad we can make this work. Thank you. This is Ann. Oh, oh, sorry. Do you mind if we take your picture? It's over. Oh. Yeah. Thank you. Thank you. Feel free to stay for the retirement celebration. We'll take a 15-minute break. Thank you. I'm glad we can make this work. Thank you. This is Ann. Oh, oh, sorry. Do you mind if we take your picture? It's over. Oh. Yeah. Thank you. Thank you. Feel free to stay for the retirement celebration. We'll take a 15-minute break. Thank you. I'm glad we can make this work. Thank you. This is Ann. Oh, oh, sorry. Do you mind if we take your picture? It's over. Oh. Yeah. Thank you. Thank you. Feel free to stay for the retirement celebration. We'll take a 15-minute break. Thank you. I'm glad we can make this work. Thank you. This is Ann. Oh, oh, sorry. Do you mind if we take your picture? It's over. Oh. Yeah. Thank you. Thank you. Feel free to stay for the retirement celebration. We'll take a 15-minute break. Thank you. I'm glad we can make this work. Thank you. This is Ann. Oh, oh, sorry. Do you mind if we take your picture? It's over. Oh. Yeah. Thank you. Thank you. Feel free to stay for the retirement celebration. We'll take a 15-minute break. Thank you. I'm glad we can make this work. Thank you. This is Ann. Oh, oh, sorry. Do you mind if we take your picture? It's over. Oh. Yeah. Thank you. Thank you. Feel free to stay for the retirement celebration. We'll take a 15-minute break. Thank you. I'm glad we can make this work. Thank you. This is Ann. Oh, oh, sorry. Do you mind if we take your picture? It's over. Oh. Yeah.[858.12]
Welcome back, everybody. We're picking up after our retiree reception. And next on the agenda are reports from the administrators. First, the principals. Whoever wants to go first? Jason does.
So I'll keep it brief tonight. At Pond Cove, I mean, of course, it's a very, very busy end of the year. Lots of stuff going on. We've finished up our end-of-the-year academic assessments, but teaching and learning definitely continues. We have a lot of fun things planned: field days and 4th grade celebration and field trips. But we really understand the benefits of maintaining a routine for our young learners and the value of the time that we have left to teach them the last few days of school. So we're maintaining routines, but also having a lot of fun and celebrating too. So, and I think the big deal for us is that many of our 4th graders appear ready to be 5th graders. So I think they're ready to go and hang out with Troy for four years. So they're excited about the 4th grade up to 5th grade step-up day, which will be on June 13, Thursday in the afternoon. And then the 4th grade celebration, which is amazing, really. Our parent organization and some key parents put that on for us. And it's just a great time, a great time to acknowledge all their work and the fact that they're moving on up. So we're looking forward to that. And I just particularly this year want to thank the middle school staff, middle school administration, Troy and Kyle, and Guidance Department and the teachers for working really closely with us this year on the transition plan. I know that my 4th grade teachers have commented that they've been very pleased with administration coming over to Pond Cove to meet with 4th grade teachers and middle school teachers coming over to Pond Cove. So I think that that's going really well. So, thank you, middle school. And that's really all I have for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you for sharing that, Jason.
Nothing prepared, so I'm gonna make it up. So it was like a big jigsaw puzzle to do a team. And last year, I kind of just watched it happen, and this year, I got a little more involved, and Kyle's been involved. But to see the amount of time it takes for the 4th grade teachers to try to thoughtfully place kids and design all these teams is really quite a process. And so I appreciate that, but it's like having a huge jigsaw puzzle in front of you and just working at it. But I definitely believe that the power is in, you know, what is that? An ounce of prevention's worth a pound of cure? Is that a saying? So, you know, getting that ready, doing a good job in the beginning and front-loading that really makes for a stronger year for all the kids. So that happened. We have hosted one night. We had an incoming 5th grade parent night, which was, I think, a pretty nice success. We had about 55, 60 people there and had some great questions and feedback. So we're trying to kind of promote that process a little earlier in the year. I think we're gonna do a similar thing for 6th grade parents in the fall. So we have a lot of that stuff is going on, continuing the year. We have our 8th grade transition to the high school is Friday. This little thing, it's only like an hour, hour and 15 minutes or something, at the high school. But then really, the biggest thing I wanted to share quickly was that our last staff meeting on Monday, it's, we often get caught up in the pace of our year or our day, and we don't really reflect and celebrate very much. So we kind of highlighted some of the things. When I got hired, I asked them what they were most proud of. It was really hard to come up with that answer. And so that was kind of been a goal, like, let's pick some things that we can really do well. So this year, some celebrations were our peer visits. It's kind of led the local communities are all kind of envious because our teachers are out in their schools, and they're wondering, "Why are you out in our school?" So now, I think it's something that we've led the way, and it's kind of catching. And when you hit something like that, it's like, wow, that was a good risk to take, and it was powerful, and it's starting to pay back. Also, the good work of our 5th grade team, taking on the task of switching to the 1 to 4 grading scale and kind of just tackling that head-on. And, you know, I think that's a pretty big step and an accomplishment for that group of people to do that really kind of quickly. So that's been a huge success. The mental health initiative was a huge success. There was a bunch. And I think until you sit down and really talk about all of those things, and when I was talking about it, they're all nodding, and you can start to see that pride build up a little bit. But lastly, the thing I think we forget to celebrate here, and I don't know if it's because it's an expectation, or I kind of get the feeling that sometimes we're embarrassed or whatever, we're really a high-performing school. And when you compare yourself to these other places and you see how you're kind of scoring out, because I took all the screenshots of the report cards before they were taken down from the state site, and there's some pretty good information on there. So to share that with them and to stop for a minute once in a while and realize what we have here and the quality of kids we have and parents and community, and celebrate that and then be kind of proud of that, I think sometimes we need permission to do that. So that's kind of how we ended our last staff meeting, and hopefully, we get through the next four, five days peacefully, and all will be good. Thanks.
So just a few quick, sort of unrelated, three strands. One is thanking some parents who've been working hard all year, and groups of parents who've been working hard all year to support students. And one of those group of parents, their work came to culmination Sunday night into Monday morning with Project Graduation. And I particularly wanted to mention Stephanie Manning and Trudy Backey. I would not want to know the number of hours that they put into organizing and supporting a huge investment in the safety of Kloszivus graduates on graduation evening. So that was a very positive affair. I wanted to thank the leadership and the membership of the High School Parent Association. They give grants, they raise money, they support creative things, and they show appreciation to teachers frequently. Their lunches that happen, teacher appreciation lunches, the cookie swap they organize, and all that sort of thing. It all takes a lot of time, it all adds up, and it's absolutely great. And then unrelated is, when I was preparing for the senior celebration, which happened last week, I noticed a few trends. It's only one year's data point, so I don't know if it means anything or not. But there are a couple of fascinating trends in terms of the colleges that I notice the kids are going to. And one is, I think, and I think part of this is probably financially driven and just being very practical, and perhaps being a little less focused on college rankings and perceived prestige and name-brand schools and that sort of thing. And that is, there's an awful lot of students who are going to state universities, main universities, non-main universities, state universities, where they can get a great education. And one of the things that fascinated me is we have 12 students going to Southern Maine Community College this year, 12 graduates, which is a huge, practical step, an economical step, so that kids can leave college probably as relatively debt-free as they can to help them get a better head start. Some of them will get certificates in various trades in addition to their associate's degrees. Some of them may take that as a stepping stone to a four-year college and getting a degree elsewhere. So I thought that was very, very interesting. That's quite a bit more than we've had historically. It has been increasing, but that was a big jump. And the third thing I wanted to mention, I was remiss. At graduation, I asked veterans to stand, and one group of people that I didn't ask to stand is the students who are going into the armed forces. So I wanted to give a call-out to Jack Aceto, who is going into the Army. I think he starts basic training next month, he told me. And Jeremy Powers, who's entering the Marines and will be also starting basic training this summer. So congratulations to them, and I wanted to mention their commitment to service that their step is demonstrating. Thank you so much. In special education, I think probably the biggest news I have is that two weeks ago, we did interviews for the psychology position. I think I've mentioned it a few times, that we've kind of done our best to hire contracted folks all school year long. That has worked out well, and I certainly appreciate that we were able to get them. But we did interviews for the permanent position, and hopefully, by the end of the evening, we'll have approved our number-one candidate. As far as things going on upstairs, we've been working fast and furious for planning for extended school year. Some of our students receive services throughout the summer, and we're trying to plan for that. It's going to take place at the high school again. Teams in all schools are busy wrapping up IEP meetings, completing progress notes, and doing transition work. Currently, we're servicing 167 students in special ed. Pond Cove, there's 71. Middle School's 46, and High School's 50 students. We do have 12 students in referral, two students out of district.
Thank you.
Hi, everybody. I'm gonna talk about gifted and talented and also professional development this evening. In terms of our gifted and talented services, we recently completed the screening and identification process. We've identified five 3rd graders, which represents 5% of the class, which is exactly where we should be. We're not permitted by the state technically to identify more than 3 to 5%. And we also identified two additional 5th graders. We held interviews this past Monday for a new GT teacher, and we hope to have someone hired by next week. And then in terms of professional development, the application deadline for summer work was last Friday. We received 50 applications. These are applications from our teachers. They are collaborative and collaborative projects that are aligned to building and district goals. We're in the process of reviewing them, and we'll let the educators know whether and at what level their project has been supported by the end of this week. So that's very exciting. And then our Great Schools Partnership Coach Ted Hall is gonna be completing this year's work by providing facilitator and data analysis training to any available teacher leaders. He's gonna be working with the Pond Cove teacher leaders on June 20, middle school teacher leaders on the 25th, and high school teacher leaders on the 27th. And we are already engaged in planning for next year. The Pond Cove content leaders, who've been instrumental in planning professional development, are continuing happily. We have two middle school content leaders rolling off, Kristin Arbor, who has been for two years our science content leader, and Hannah Roner, who's been the ELA content leader. And they've both done a wonderful job, and I just wanted to publicly acknowledge how much we've appreciated all the work they've put in, their organizational and leadership skills. And they, we are in the process of replacing them, so you'll see those names next fall. And then at the high school, I'm wrapping up my one-on-one conversation with staff. I've met with 28 teachers so far. These are conversations that range from 30 to 45 minutes. I was just telling Mark Pandarvis that it's been about my most favorite part of the year so far. The conversations have been productive and even inspiring, and I'm really looking forward to sharing the results with them and working with them to plan next year's professional development. And that's it.
Kathy, the number of people who are applying for options or opportunities this summer, is that an average number, 50, or is that?
Yeah, actually, slightly more than we had last year, I think.
It's interesting that you bring that up, because I just found that impressive.
Isn't it?
I am so excited to hear that there are 50 teachers that want to work on their craft over the summer.
And actually, to be clear, that's 50 applications, and each application involves at least two teachers.
Oh.
So we have teachers who are involved in multiple projects, and it is, it's tremendous, because it is the best time to get that kind of work done.
That's really exciting.
Thanks, Kathy. Thank you.
So Catherine is out sick tonight. She's not feeling well. You do have her financials in your packet, so if you have any questions, I'm sure if you can get them to me or to her, we'd be happy to supply you with answers. So the end of the year has been very busy, as everybody's talked about. Events throughout the district, concerts, field trips, special project presentations, and many more things going on. Behind the scenes, some staff members have been busy preparing for the next year. Plans for trainings, as required by new laws, in the area of mandated reporting for suspected sexual abuse and suicide prevention, have been taken on by our school's social workers and counselors. So they're busy planning a beginning-of-the-year training and also some staff meeting trainings. Some staff have participated in interviews as we fill vacancies for next year. Special ed, as Del said, our staff are busy planning for the extended-year program. They've had charts up all over the office with all kinds of things on them about the extended-year program. Many staff are anticipating professional development opportunities that they will attend this summer, as Kathy was talking about. Maintenance and custodial staff have been planning their summer schedules in an effort to work around the many activities that are going on in our schools this summer, and that's quite a challenge. So while we're busy closing out the 2018-19 school year, we're also in full swing for planning for future events for next year. So you have in your packet a June enrollment that shows that we are up one student from May and down 14 students from last year at this time. And I know probably most of you know this, but I did receive the resignation of Catherine Mesmer, our business manager. Catherine has accepted a new position near Gray. And in your packets or as a separate attachment, you do have a description for the business manager that hopefully you will approve later on in this meeting, so if you want to take a look at that. So we've been very busy finishing out this year and getting ready for next year.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Okay, then we'll move on to new business. Consideration to approve the following job descriptions. May I have a motion, please?
I move we approve the following job descriptions: maintenance mechanic, foreman, school business manager, bookkeeper, payroll coordinator, accounts payable clerk, and receptionist.
Second. Second. Do you want to speak to if there's any significant changes that we should?
So I have met with Arlene Mokaport, our human resources person, and with all of the people who fulfill those positions at this point, to review the old job description that we had, just to bring it up to date. There have been some minor changes in some, for example, in the maintenance mechanic foreman. That job has changed a little bit in the focus, so I met with Rob, the man who is in that position, and Perry about that job description, just to bring it up to date. So there's not a lot, a lot of changes. We did look at the business office and just do some switching around of responsibilities, as we said we were going to do. And as I said, I've gone over with those people that are in those positions and the other people, to make sure that everybody's in agreement about what they're doing. And so that's what is represented here, so.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor?
And I will continue, we're continuing to look at job descriptions, so I'll be continuing to bring you some other ones.
Next, item 8B. May I have a motion, please?
I move we grant the superintendent a school's authority to hire school personnel excluding administrative positions, which will require board approval during the summer.
Have a second? Second. Any discussion?
This is typical practice, correct?
Yeah, it just allows us to, you know, hire people as we interview and move things along during the summer, instead of having to pull everybody together for a meeting.
Great, thank you for doing that.
All those in favor? Okay, next item, 8C. May I have a motion, please?
Remove we approve the following policies for second reading. Policy FF, naming of school facilities, and policy ACAa, harassment and sexual harassment of students.
Have a second?
A second.
Any discussion?
I'll just make a comment. The policy FF, naming of school facilities, that is the policy that we had, a very bare-bones policy, I believe it was two meetings ago, we discussed, filling it out with sort of more language around the process, creating a committee, and putting in more, basically the intent of the policy. And then we brought it back last month, and we thought Elizabeth had pointed out rightly that that was the first time we brought it to the public for consideration, that we wanted to leave an opportunity for meaningful feedback, if there was any, after that presentation. So seeing that there was no additional feedback at that point, so we're now going to, we're bringing the policy that we drafted, and it is included in the packet now for approval. On harassment and sexual harassment of students, that one has minor sort of naming updates. Nothing substantive has changed in the policy.
Thank you. Master?
I have some questions, if Hope can elaborate, since we heard earlier today from students about this class, if any of their needs are met here, and whether we need to reach out to them to include this, and if we approve this down the road, this is amendable, it can be added.
I can address that question. First of all, you reminded me that you mentioned cyberbullying, and there's a separate policy for cyberbullying, so we had it covered.
Okay.
I wanted to make sure you knew that we did, I did address that question, or at least I looked into it. And with respect to the assault question, it is on the radar for an agenda item for the policy committee in the fall.
Okay.
It is something that we have to have with respect to mandatory reporting, so it is, there is actually meaning to it.
But it's separate in this?
It's separate, yes.
Okay.
But with any policy, if there's, you know, if it comes up for review in the future, there's always room for amending, if need be.
Yeah, just a comment here. I don't know where it goes, but just an idea that came out from my, and should be discussed at the policy meetings, but it looks like for one of the students' perspective that the person was not being reached to, or staff intervened, and staff may not have intervened correctly, or they might have been biased. So my question is, when such situation occurs, can we get someone from outside who does not have any biases and assess the issues? Is that a possibility?
I'm not sure how to answer that.
I was just gonna make a comment as a, just, I have, I mean, I'm the policy committee chair, and I'm just, this motion is referenced to approving these two policies, so we're kind of going off-topic. To the extent we're having a discussion right now, it really should be.
Okay, to the extent, okay.
Within this bullet point.
Thank you.
Fair point.
Okay. Then, no further discussions?
I was just gonna say thank you. I know that my objection to approving it as a, at the first read last time, may have seemed just sort of procedural, but I just felt it was important, especially, you know, since we were, you know, dramatically changing the naming of school facilities for the better. And I'm really pleased with the work that went into that, and it feels very community-centered, and it gives much more direction. So thank you for the forbearance, and thank you for the work.
All those in favor? Okay, so next on our agenda, we have item 8D, and added at the beginning of our meeting is the name for Wendy Dorziak for District Web.
Webmaster.
Webmaster. May I have a motion, please?
I move we approve the following 2019-2020 co-curricular and extracurricular personnel nominations as defined and described in our packet.
A second. All right. So Laura, and Heather, you second? Any discussion?
I would like to thank administration for really getting ahead of these. A lot of times in the past, we've seen some of these either at the end of August or the beginning of September. So I would like to thank administrators for bringing this to us in advance, so that we can review and have these positions settled while in advance of the fall. And I know it's not easy, and I appreciate it very much. And thank you to everybody that is willing to put in this extra work to enrich the lives of our students.
Heather?
I have a question. Jeff Thorack's not here, and I don't know if Jeff Shad can help, or if Donna knows the answer to this. And it's just clarity for myself. Football has a lot of people being stipend, and it says football assistant first stipend, football assistant second stipend, and then another person, football assistant second stipend, and then another assistant, football assistants. I'm wondering if that can be explained, because my understanding is that with each, and then there's, and then there's more on the other side, football assistant and football assistant. And my understanding was that with each sport, there is a head coach and an assistant, and a junior varsity coach and an assistant? It just doesn't seem to make sense.
I can find out, I have no idea.
It's likely someone over booster-funded, too.
That would be great. I'm sure there's an easy explanation, I just don't get it, so.
Watch some football, you'll get it.
I believe that almost all those positions, with the exception of three coaching positions, are booster-funded positions.
Great. Thank you.
I can confirm that with Jeff, but I've heard him say that in the past, and I'm quite sure that's the case.
That would be great. I would love a confirmation on that, and that would be the explanation I'm looking for. Thank you. Thanks, Jeff.
Okay, all those in favor? Okay, so next on our agenda, we have item 8E. May I have a motion, please?
I move we approve, is it Kate or Katie?
Katie.
Katie Holland as psychological examiner.
Have a second?
A second.
Any discussion? So I see that it would see.
Now the team interviewed her, and I interviewed her via Skype. She was in Colorado, yeah.
Okay.
Very nice young woman, very knowledgeable, great experience.
And just remind me, is this for a full-time or a part-time?
Full-time.
Full-time. Okay. All those in favor? Okay, thank you. Next, we added to the agenda item 8F, consideration to approve a new business manager.
Marcia Weeks.
Marcia Weeks. May I have a motion, please?
I move that we approve as the business manager, Marcia Weeks.
Second. Okay, any discussion?
Marcia works in Portland right now. She did extensive work in Arizona before she left to raise her family, working for, I believe, is it the state? County in Arizona. Very impressive with her knowledge of business administration, so.
In schools or?
That was for a county, not school-related, but she's now working in the Portland school, so.
Okay, great. Thanks for the committee work on the interview. All those in favor? All right, next, we're moving on to committee reports. Policy, I don't know, Hope, if you want to add anything?
Sure, yeah. So policy will, as is typical, we will meet again in the fall, so I believe our meeting is not on the calendar, but it should be early September is the plan for that. And there is no agenda set at the moment, but we have certain policies on our radar to review, and they include cellphone policy, the policy regarding assault, which is something we need, must do, and a technology policy is something that has been raised.
Great, thank you. Paz, I have nothing to report. They graduated late May, so there hasn't been a meeting since last one. Tech Committee, Elizabeth?
I'd like to cede my time to the chair to speak about the website possibilities, if that's appropriate at this time.
Sure, yeah, we are, we have met, we're going to meet again tomorrow, the subcommittee. Elizabeth is on it, and we're currently trying to identify which content/host web developer that we're going to sign a contract with, and hopefully get started very soon, hopefully after tonight. And then once we have signed an agreement letter, it takes roughly three to six weeks for the launch of the website, so. Hopefully by September, we'll be ready to go.
And the committee, is there stool representation?
At this point, no, because we're just still doing the sort of the legwork, but I think what we'll do is send out, because it's tricky over the summer, we'll send out emails and surveys, hopefully even one tomorrow, to ask some basic questions, and then there'll be another one for more input.
Okay.
But because it's a summer gig, it's a little hard to have organized student input.
Yeah, we'd just like to see a website that's user-friendly to potential parents, to existing teachers, to students, to staff, so the audience is important. Who's your audience? Don't think that is just going to be the parents taking advantage of it, so I just want to make sure that it's available to all of them.
Thank you. Okay, that's it. Dropout, please, and also ready?
Yeah, we met once, a while ago, and majority of that time was used by a young gentleman who unfortunately had dropped out of Cape High School, even though he was through the whole school system. And so he came to share with us his, the good and the bad and the ugly, and so it was a recent person, and thus was a very, very positive conversation of what worked, what did not work. And we plan to have more meetings with him, and he's going to be involved in the committee and address, because he's, everyone, everyone's, everyone dropped out is a special case, a different reasoning. So we're trying to identify where there might be some, where we can improve in different areas within the school system. Our next meeting is this Friday, the 14th, I think, at 8:00 AM. Is that right, Mrs. Shag?
Thank you, Hester.
Yeah.
Do you remember any news from CEF?
No news from CEF. The meeting was supposed to be tomorrow night. They emailed yesterday to say it was changed to last night, and it was my daughter's fifth birthday, so I did not go to the meeting.
Okay, thank you. Any school board agenda requests for the next meeting, which will be, I don't have the exact date, but the end of August, will be our next regular school board business meeting? Any agenda requests?
No, but if you don't mind, I would just like to remind the public that school board agenda requests can be made by calling the school department office, by emailing Susanna, the school board chair, by emailing Donna Wolfram, our superintendent, by coming into the office and making requests, so there are lots of ways, no smoke signals, but to make school board agenda requests, and we welcome them. I would have a request, I don't know if it has to be for that meeting, but we had a workshop sometime last year, I feel like it was Alice, the active response, Nate Carpenter, and Erin Taylor, and I can't remember who all, but we did a workshop, and I'm just curious kind of how that's proceeding, and every quarter, and what that looks like.
Seems like the beginning of the school year is a perfect time, and it'd be nice to get an update. Anyone else? You think about it later? Go for it, ask. Okay, announcement of upcoming meetings, I think we've heard about dropout prevention committee is on Friday. Policy met today, I believe, right? Policy meet today? No. Are you meeting?
September.
Oh, okay, September. And then, I think that's it. We're just waiting on the vote. Hopefully, we'll have no reason to meet again after tonight, so I think that's it. Okay? All right, so then may I have a motion, please?
I move we adjourn. A second.
All those in favor? Happy July.